Hi, thanks for having me. You guys.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
You say it's hard to believe. Sorry. So, please, love of the state, it's been a while since I've been on the legal news. So, uh. Well, that's a good because that's best, that's, that's just everybody should be. Come on. Well, what we do is in our presentation, we always have the tax commission. We'll talk, we ask questions about, and I'm wondering, because a lot of people talk to me about cities. So, we have a lot of segments out there. It doesn't about the senior, um, except for sixty-two, maybe seven, or physically. So, we explain all the time, all the vision of different countries. So, we have a full presentation. Yes, it's, it's, it's probably, it's probably true, and then if you have, if you have a speaking, he'll come up and then he'll do a full presentation. At the first one, you had, you had a full presentation. That really helped out by trying to get a full party.
Good morning. This is you.
I hear you.
Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners' call meeting, ten a.m., Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we will begin our meeting with our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to play.
They say it now. What time? What time is it?
Ten o'clock. Ten o'clock.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. The special call meeting is for public hearing for our millage rate, the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four millage rate presentation. If the following presenters will come forward, Bernita Campbell, our Budget Director, and Michael Harris, our Henry County Tax Commissioner.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and Henry County community. My name is Bernita Campbell. I'm the Budget Director for Henry County. Today, I will provide the Board and the citizens with a brief summary of some FY two thousand and twenty-four budget highlights. Once I conclude, I will turn it over to the Tax Commissioner, Mr. Michael Harris, who will then take you through the two thousand and twenty-three millage discuss, millage rate discussion. An executive summary, the FY two thousand and twenty-four adopted general fund budget is two hundred and thirty-two million dollars, which is a seven percent or fifteen point one million dollar increase year over year. Some items of note for the FY two thousand and twenty-four budget, the adopted budget was based on the current millage rate of twelve point seven three-three mills. Only current projected revenues are being used to pay for current projected expenditures. Fund balance was not used to balance the budget. Some of the major items included in this year's general fund budget was the class and comp, implementation for county employees, judicial supplement increases, and countywide contract increases ranging from technological, medical, and professional services increases. The FY two thousand and twenty-four budget was based on expected property tax digest growth of approximately fourteen percent. Eighty-six percent of the growth is due to inflationary growth, while fourteen percent is due to real housing inventory growth. At this time, I will yield to the Tax Commissioner, Mr. Harris, who will now take you through the millage rate discussions for FY two thousand and twenty-three.
And again, good morning, Chair, good morning, Board members and citizens. Uh, once again, it's always a pleasure to come back every year and do our annual millage rate presentation. Again, a lot of this, a lot of information is very similar to the last few years, principally because, as Ms. Campbell stated, millage rate has not changed. So, while the values have increased some, um, our millage rate has been set at the, for the last five-plus years. So, quickly, what is the millage rate? Uh, is it simply the tax rate used to calculate our local property taxes? Um, I believe this year, right now, one mill is equivalent to eleven point one five million dollars, and that's been increasing steadily as our digest has grown over the years. The rate represents the amount a homeowner has to pay for every one thousand dollars of properties, of the property's assessed value. And the assessed value includes both the structure and the land on which it sits. Uh, so property values are made of two really, two components. First, you have your fair market value. This is the, the value determined by the tax assessors. And just a quick aside here, you know, the tax assessors, they're bound by their methodology and how they make determinations for their fair market values. People often say, you know, why can't you just value it less? They are, they have very strict guidelines and requirements that mandate how they go about their determinations for their fair market value. So, um, again, they do a tremendous job. John Self and, and Cooper and Barbara, they are phenomenal what they do and how they do it, and the volume at which they do it at. Um, the assess, the Tax Assessor's Office mails notices in April and May, taxpayer has forty-five days to appeal the value of the Board of Commission, uh, Board of Assessors. Um, again, every year, everyone gets an assessment notice. It gives you an estimate of what your tax will be, anticipated, um, tax will be, not, it's not definitive, but it does give you an idea of kind of what exemptions currently exist on your property, what your valuation has, um, changed to for this current year. And again, you also have forty-five days to appeal if you think that valuation is, is askew in some way. The assessed value is calculated by simply multiplying your fair market value by forty percent. This is actually becomes the value that's taken into account for your taxation. So, calculating property tax, again, at twelve point seven three-three, which has been the same for well over six years now. Base, uh, example, this is a homesteaded property, one for a homesteaded property, one for a non-homesteaded property, so you can see some of the differentiation between the two. Um, homesteaded property with a fair market value of three hundred thousand dollars, uh, that fair market value times forty percent gives you an assessed value of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, again, assessed value. With the homestead, your basic L-one homestead, that would be a deduction of fifteen thousand dollars off of your, um, assessed value. So, your taxable value, your tax amount is only a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, a hundred and five thousand dollars times your millage rate would give you one thousand three hundred and thirty-six thousand ninety-six cents in county taxes. Again, please bear in mind, this is only the county taxes I'm talking about, not the school board or anything else. So, conversely, looking at a non-homesteaded property, this is based on, again, the standard L-one exemption, on a non-homesteaded property, again, same fair market value of three hundred thousand, same assessed value of a hundred and twenty thousand, but it, because it's not homesteaded, it does not have the fifteen thousand dollar reduction. So, you're paying at that higher, your taxable value is now a hundred and twenty thousand as opposed to a hundred and five thousand. So, you're paying one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven thousand ninety-six cents in county taxes, difference of about a hundred and ninety-one dollars. So, you can see the discernible difference between, and the value of, um, applying for homestead. So, what happens to my tax bill if the property value goes up and millage rate remains the same, which is a scenario we have again this year, as we've had in the last several years? Property value increases from three hundred to three hundred and sixty thousand, about twenty-seven percent increase. Um, again, three sixty times the forty percent would give you an assessed value of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That a hundred and forty-four thousand times your millage rate of twelve point seven three-three would yield a county tax of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents for, again, a non-homesteaded property. It's an increase of about three hundred and five dollars on a non-homesteaded property year over year from the previous year based on a twenty percent increase. The homesteaded property would not see an increase in county taxes due to the frozen exemption, and every year, we kind of get, we delve deeper and deeper into this conversation in reference to the frozen provision. Um, this is something that was enacted by Congress or by the legis, by the local legislation in two thousand and four. It applies to county taxes only, does not apply to the school taxes or improvements made to the home after you've applied for your homestead, or additional land that's been acquired. Again, so the frozen provision, it was enacted by local legislation back in two thousand and four, if those of you remember, two thousand and four, Henry County was one of the top ten fastest-growing counties in the nation, and so what they were seeing was a surge in, in property values, and the challenge was, a lot of our senior citizens were, were struggling with not being able to keep up with their payments. So, local legislation, uh, was proposed to enact the frozen provision, um, which includes the primary residence and up to five contiguous acres of land. The base year for the fair market value for home, um, for the year prior to filing for homestead. So, if you were to apply today for your two thousand and twenty-four, um, homestead application, your base year would be two thousand and twenty-three, as a example. Exemption is automatically renewed from year to year so long as a resident continues to occupy the home as their primary residence. Questions asked often, it, so the year you apply for homestead, your, the previous year becomes your base year, and then there's no need to go back and reapply for the frozen provisions, already automatically in place. There is a provision that, as relates to the senior exemption, when once a resident turns sixty-two, they do have to come back in, apply for that age exemption, and then once at age sixty-two, it continues on at sixty-five, sixty-eight, and seventy automatically. Again, homeowner pays a base year for the county, um, and water portion of the tax bill, even if the value increases beyond the base year. If property value decreases below the base year, homeowner would pay, would pay based on the lower valuation. So, if it goes down so much that, um, that lower valuation would be more of a savings, then they would only be paying the lower, the lower value. So, there's no, absolutely no detriment to having this. What I wanted to do this year was actually show, um, provide a brief, quick example of what this tangibly looks like on a tax bill. So, we pulled a tax bill, this is one from two thousand and twenty. And here we go. So, what I want folks to kind of focus on is, this is the tax value, for two thousand and twenty, the value of this property was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. The exemption amount was twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty, and the tax is paid by the county, county tax was four hundred thousand, thirty-eight cents, plus these, because we moved to the special service district, so that includes the unincorporated, police, fire, and recreation, so all those values. Moving to the two thousand and twenty-one bill, we can see now the adjusted fair market value has increased to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, about twenty thousand dollar increase. Um, your exemption amount has gone up, and if we go back to the two thousand and twenty-one bill, we see what stays the same, and this is the frozen provision, is your taxable value. Because once you get to, once you get your fair market value, take it by forty percent, you get your assessed value, and then you subtract the, any exemptions that apply, that'll give you your taxable value, and then the formula is quite simply your taxable value times your millage rate gives you your tax. So, you see in two thousand and twenty, the taxable value for this property for the county taxes was at forty-five thousand. The school taxes, again, that's taxable value was eighty-seven thousand, um, in two thousand and twenty. Go to two thousand and twenty-one, taxable value remains at forty-five thousand, or just for the county tax, as well as all those other county functions, police, fire, recreation, and unincorporated. However, you see the school taxes has now increased up to seventy-five thousand. And going on to, uh, going on to two thousand and twenty-two bill, Henry County tax, again, remains fixed at forty-five thousand, and again, same for the other services, and the school M and O, maintenance operations and bond, that taxable value has increased to eighty-eight thousand based on the, the increased value. So, how are we able to keep that taxable value the same? By simply, um, increasing the exemption amount. So, what you'll see on your bill, um, for those who have applied for homestead in past years, you want to go back and check your taxable value for previous years to make sure that taxable value has been fixed, and what you'll see, um, associated with that is your exemption value has increased. So, going back to the two thousand and twenty bill, exemption value started out at twenty-five thousand. By two thousand and twenty-two, that exemption amount is now forty-four thousand to help offset the increase in your fair market value. So, I just want to make sure we kind of made that a little more clear, because typically that's one of the main questions we receive throughout the course of the year. Um, and again, all that time, your county tax remains at four hundred dollars, as well as all your police, fire, and recreation, that all remains fixed at, that, based on that same taxable value and the same millage rate. Every year, a new exemption chart comes out, and this kind of lays out what exemptions exist. L-one, our standard exemption is five thousand dollars for, um, the county, and four thousand for your school M and O, and again, once you get into L-two, based on your age exemptions, that increases, um, twenty thousand for your school exemption. At age sixty-five, it goes up to eighty thousand, age sixty-eight, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar exemption, and by age seventy, you're no longer paying any school taxes. And there's also a variety of other ones, disability exemptions, veterans, um, disability exemptions, surviving spouse, free port, forest land protection as well. So, there's a series of them, and all this remains posted on our website. So, always a big question where I was asked, where do our tax dollars go? And this is, this chart hasn't changed in several years. Um, so, taking that a hundred percent, um, of that hundred percent, you see the larger portion of that, fifty percent is school maintenance and operations, and additional eight percent is a school bond of three point six-two mills. Um, so, all things considered, the fifty-eight percent of your, roughly fifty-eight percent of your taxes go to our schools for maintenance and operations, as well as for the bonds that take care of building new schools and facilities. Um, about thirty-seven percent is county government, and again, that's represented by a twelve point seven three-three mills, and another, um, five percent is the Water Authority Board. Um, there are two mills that they have for, um, maintaining the, the bond they have for our water resources. Um, so now we get into the digest process itself, um, which kind of works in conjunction with the setting of the millage. Uh, this is a very collaborative process. It actually begins with the Tax Assessor's Office, John Self, again, as I mentioned earlier, him, his team, with Cooper and Barbara, they do a phenomenal job of every year going through. They have to start the process when the appeals, first getting the assessments out, going through the proper, the process of doing the assessments, um, sending the assessments out, and then they handle the appeals, them in conjunction with the Board of Assessors, and they have to process that in a very timely manner to make sure they can get that information back over to our office. So, again, every year, it's, it's, um, it's become more and more seamless every year that, that I've been here, certainly. Um, from there, we coordinate back with our Tax Commissioner's Office, and again, all you all know Lynn Cardy, um, she's our deputy, um, tax, deputy tax commissioner. She and her team, and she's here now with Ms. Karen Spinks and Ms. Ebony Hambrick. Um, they, once they begin receiving the digest information from the Assessor's Office, they begin to process, the painstaking process of going through, checking all the assessments, checking the bills, checking all the numbers, rerunning the numbers. Um, and again, so their, their time really amps up, and again, they've done a phenomenal job working with and coordinating with all the different entities as well. Um, Board of Education, um, they have to, they set their, their process, they set their budget, which they did back in June, and then from there, they determine what kind of a millage they need to set in order to make sure they meet their budgetary requirements. Um, they are fixed at a twenty-mill, um, at twenty mills. They are, by state legislation, they can't go beyond twenty mills, and they've been set at that maximum number for several years now. Um, and last night, they actually adopted their twenty-mill, um, millage rate yet again. So, they are, they are completed in their process. So, they've gone through the process of, um, setting their millage at this point. And you all, the Board of Commissioners, same process, you establish your budget. From there, once the digest comes in, tells you how much taxable value exists within the county, and then from there, you make determination on what millage will, will be needed in order to, to meet your, all your budgetary requirements. And again, today represents the first meeting of our three, three public hearings. Uh, we also work in conjunction with the city, Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove. Um, this has been kind of a, um, active last couple of years. City of Hampton incorporated a new millage rate last year, so this, this will be their second year. The city of Stockbridge is considering a millage rate this year, um, so we'll be working closely with them on that process as well. And they've gone through, they've each gone through two of their public hearings so far, and this week, they're scheduled to make their final, final approvals. City McDon, City McDonough, they've had their city tax in, in place for quite some time now, and they finalized their adopted millage of three point zero three-three last night. And finally, once all the information has been gathered and checked and rechecked and checked again, all the information is sent over to the Department of Revenue for them, for them to conduct their final review, and upon, upon approval by the Department of Revenue, they send us a, um, form that gives us authorization to actually move forward with the collection of taxes. Um, by the way, I believe our tax rate for two thousand and twenty-two is at ninety-nine percent collection rate as of this morning, so that is progressing nicely. Um, the tax digest itself, it consists of, um, just all the assessment and exemptions within the county, that's real and personal property, timber, mobile homes, motor vehicles, um, heavy-duty equipment, and public utilities. The digest must be approved by the State of Revenue before the tax bills can be mailed out. Bills must be received sixty days in advance of the due date. So, our due date is, um, November sixteenth. So, we kind of work backwards from that day, November sixteenth, we have, the bills have to be received by the public before, within sixty days of that due date. So, we, our goal every year is to make sure that we have the bills out by no later than September first, to make sure we have some cushion. Once we get through the, the, the adoption of the millage process, there's still a couple of weeks worth of work that has to be done, generating the new taxes, the tax, new tax bills, doing those calculations, send that information to the printer, they have to send the bills back, we have to go back through and review all of those bills, make sure they're accurate, um, before we're ready to send them out. So, this year, we anticipate sending it out sometime around August twenty-second. Um, so, the, the two thousand and twenty-three proposed millage rate, that's been stated by Ms. Campbell, right now, the county is considering, um, at the same, or get it over here, twelve point seven three-three county millage rate. Um, once you incorporate the school millage of twenty mills, as well as a school bond of three point six-two-eight, as well as the water authority mills, that leaves you a total millage of thirty-eight point three-six-one. So, that'd be the total that people would see on their bills. But again, right now, for the sake of this conversation, we're really focusing on what the county millage rate is. Um, so that's in unincorporated Henry County, cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton as well. Um, again, McDonough has approved their city tax of three point zero three-three, and as stated, um, city of Stockbridge is considering a millage. Right now, they advertise that a six-mill rate, but what I've been told by the, um, city manager and, and mayor and the council members that they anticipate that being far less than six-mill, should they, should they consider to adopt one. Um, Hampton adopted four point five mills last year, and that's where they stand. One of the changes we do have this year is in the countywide millage rate, the eight point zero five-five, that really kind of, um, makes up our general fund, um, amounts, those are the things that, for all the other, all the, all the departments, with the exception of fire, police, recreation, and unincorporated areas. Um, this year, the fire special service district is called, that was created back in two thousand and nineteen, that increased to one point seven nine-one, and police has increased to two point one five-six, and recreation, I think, dropped slightly down to zero point four two-nine. Um, so again, collectively, all those still at the exact same twelve point seven three-three that we have had, again, over seven years now. So, collectively, nothing has changed from, from standpoint, it's been distributed a little bit this differently, but nothing has changed. Um, sample tax bills, this was last year's bill, um, just to give a little bit of context, we actually made some changes to, from last year's bill to this year. One thing we added last year was adding a lot of the information on the backside of the bill, so now it's a two-sided bill. Um, this year, um, Lynn and her staff, they've worked through, um, making some enhancements to the bill, making it a little bit easier to follow along and, and to gather information. Um, one of the biggest changes you'll note on the bill is this area right here, which speaks to the, the homestead tax relief grant that was enacted by the governor and Congress. Um, it was passed early this year, the state had about a nine hundred and thirty million dollar windfall, um, and so what they opted to do was distribute that to, to all the residents via, through the counties, by, um, offering a tax relief grant for those folks who have homestead on their property. Um, so this is the notice, I've actually got, I've provided some handouts as well, leave some here, and I, I think I've even copies for all the, the board members. Um, so again, March of this year, Governor Kemp, along with the General Assembly, enacted the homestead tax relief grant. Um, it's a one-time, it's just for this year, it does, it's not in perpetuity, it's just a one-time, um, relief based on the nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred and thirty million dollar surplus that they had, and it will be shown as a tax credit on the tax bills. So, it'll be done in the form of eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand dollar reduction in the assessed value of their homesteaded property, therefore, the tax amounts, though they may vary slightly, certainly from between unincorporated to the cities, um, the homestead tax, so it will apply to, um, it will, it won't apply to the bonds, tax allocation districts, of which we don't have any, or special service districts created after the year, after two thousand and twenty-four, after two thousand and four, created two thousand and four. As you recall, we created our specialist tax district in two thousand and nineteen, so those categories for police, fire, recreation that I showed earlier, they would not be included. So, on the back of the sheet that I provided to the council members, and then we'll have this on our website as well, for someone in Henry County, that would mean it would be eighteen thousand dollar assessed value times the, our general fund rate of eight point zero eight-five. That would be, that's the calculation that would be used to come up with how much would be, what the, what that credit savings would be. So, on the county side, it'd be a credit of about a hundred and forty-five dollars. On the school board side, it would be that eighteen thousand dollar assessed value times their millage rate of twenty mills, so point oh-two, and that would yield a savings of about three hundred and sixty dollars. So, we anticipate about five hundred dollar savings for, um, or credit that will be shown on everyone's tax bill for those here in Henry County, unincorporated Henry County, slightly higher for those in the cities that have a tax, that have a tax rate, um, because they'd also get that, um, I think City McDonough, who set theirs at three point zero three mills, would see an additional, ballpark about eighty-one dollars in savings on their credit. So, again, a little bit of relief. Um, so I think that's a big win for everybody from that standpoint. Uh, the schedule today represents the first hearing on July twenty-fifth, we'll have another hearing this evening at six o'clock, and final adoption slated for nine a.m. Um, final public hearing at nine a.m. with the adoption to follow immediately thereafter at nine fifteen. I'm happy to address any comments or questions that you may have.
Commissioner Harris, could you go back to the slide that, the two thousand and twenty tax bill? Commissioner Harris, could you go back to the slide that, the 2020 tax bill?
This one?
So the taxable value there of $45,000, say, on a fair market value of 178, is this the frozen homestead exemption?
It is.
Okay. So if that frozen homestead exemption was removed, what would that mean?
So now your exemption would be, if your standard L1, that exemption amount would only be $15,000. So your taxable value would go up to about $60,000. So it'd be that additional, in this case, 10,000 times your millage rate. So that would have increased it by a couple hundred dollars? Few dollars. But again, it becomes, it grows exponentially as the value continues to grow, to go up. I think Mr. Self, this year, anticipates that the amount of frozen, that benefit to Henry County residents is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $30 million. And that's, we've seen that increase considerably over the years.
So because we have that frozen homestead exemption in place, that's a savings for homeowners?
It's a tremendous savings. So you'll see, again, in 2020, their savings was at least 15, at least 10,000. By 2022, that savings is roughly $30,000. Because that's how much is going to be removed from your exemption amount, would be about $30,000.
Okay. And then on your slide presentation, you talked about all of the different service districts. Almost 5% of our mills go pretty much to public safety and recreation.
Correct.
And then the remainder goes to all of the other county services that we have to provide for the citizens. The homestead tax relief grant, it shows here on the handout, I guess that you, is this what you provided for us?
Yes.
Okay. Shows that there'd be a tax relief of at least $500-plus off of their tax bill once they receive the tax bill, correct?
That's correct.
And then the cities will get just a little bit more because of what they provide.
Because of their cities, because they have an additional city tax that it can also be deducted from.
Because I see McDonough gets a little bit more off than the county residents. And I'm assuming, would Hampton do the same? Would it be the same for Hampton as well? Okay. Does any of the other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Wilson?
Commissioner Harris, can you answer this for me on the exemption, the frozen exemption that only applies for the unincorporated area of Henry County, for the citizens that file homestead, correct? Not into city limits of. So if you live in a city that has a tax, and we, they don't have that frozen exemption in the cities with the taxes, is that correct?
The frozen would apply to the county portion of the taxes. If there is a city tax, a separate city tax, like right now, cities of Hampton and McDonough have a city tax, they do not have a frozen provision associated with their city taxes. I believe the city of Hampton is considering that for next year. But as it stands right now, there'd be no, so that city tax, as it stands in McDonough, as the value goes up for a property in McDonough, while they would see, and they've applied for homestead back 10 years ago, they would see the frozen provision enacted on their county, on portions of their county taxes, which would be the 8.055. And if they have other county services that they provided, fire, if you were. But they would not see, they would see their taxable value continue to increase for their city tax, for purposes of city tax.
All right, well, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Harris. If you would just hang tight, just in case we have a couple of other questions. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come and speak, please come to the podium and state your name, and you will have three minutes. Stephanie, will you run the timer?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Vanessa Thomas, Councilwoman for City of McDonough at Large. And I would certainly feel remiss in not coming before you all to, on behalf of my, of our constituents and residents and homeowners. One thing that I've noticed in this article that was published in the Henry Herald regarding the notice of property tax increase is that it was specified that unincorporated increase will be 10.21%, and that the county incorporated would be 23.54%. That's like a difference of 13.33% increase in property taxes. That has not been explained. Our Tax Commissioner Harris did a very good job in explaining everything for the taxes. However, I still have a question as to how and why it's divided the way it is as it relates to unincorporated versus incorporated. We are, we, as incorporated, cities that are incorporated, that's like a 13.33 percentage increase. And we are, and our millage rate is not that, that high. So we certainly want to get an understanding on why that increase is and why it was so specified that, in the paper, that, you know, if you were unincorporated, you would be, on a $350,000 home, you'd be paying anywhere from $93.25 to $192 increase. Whereas if you were incorporated, you would be paying for a $350,000 home, $192 more increase. So it's just kind of confusing. We have questions there as it relates to unincorporated versus incorporated. What we are paying, what are we paying for property taxes for Henry County in such an increase of about 13.33% in the difference of the two? That is the main question that I have. And I'm sure the rest of our homeowners have that same question who live in the incorporated Henry County. My next question is, as I mentioned, you know, what's the difference? You know, what are we paying for as it relates to incorporated versus unincorporated? Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chair and Board, Don Dunlap, 192 Ashley Drive, and unincorporated Henry County, McDonough. I'm asking, I know the millage rate itself is not changing, but the valuations have increased, which means we will be paying additional taxes. It may be that some of us don't pay additional taxes due to the tax relief grant the governor signed, but we are, our cost of living's increased. The Fed is looking at 2% core inflation. We're nowhere near down there. It increased dramatically last year, and it's still, they're fighting to push it down. But the cost of living is incredibly high compared to what it was. And it would be nice if we weren't paying additional taxes every single year, which we have been for the last several years. The Board of Education is not relenting on their 20 mills. The cost of living for all of us is increasing, and we think that we shouldn't have to pay a tax increase yet again this year. So just as a citizen of Henry County, I would ask that you have a little relief on us. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I appreciate the work that you do. It is extremely important to do this job. These are tough decisions that have to be made. I'll be making this decision on Thursday myself. And understanding that we've had two millage hearings so far, and what I've heard from the constituents is, you know, and I said this to the school board yesterday at their meeting, don't do it all at one time. We are hurting out here. Whatever you can do to show us any type of relief, no matter what that is, sharpen your pencils to do whatever you can. My own personal situation, I'm going to be voting for the lowest possible tax that will pay for our city budget at all. Because I have the staff to do whatever is necessary to trim whatever they could to be able to give us the lowest rate possible. They've presented us with several options. I've been to this hearing several times. I was at this hearing in 2014 and 2015 when Chief Nichols was sitting here, pretty much begging for more funding for the police department. Bo Moss cast a gut-wrenching vote after about eight or nine hours of testimony from the community to raise the millage rate. He lost his seat as a result. But he made the right decision, because the right decision was needed to be made. And it takes courage to make the right decisions in order to do so. Mr. Bowman did not return either. And those decisions are decisions that we have to make. One of the decisions I'm going to have to swim with is starting the Stockbridge Police Department. I make that decision every day. I would not change it, no matter what. And when it was announced, we said there was a possibility of a city tax, it would be minimal. I certainly would be voting for a minimal tax myself, should that, those options be presented to us. I'd like to thank you all for collecting the 1.9% millage, 1.9 mills, over the last decade or so to pay for services. So we did actually have a public service, millage, that needed to be collected, and it's been collected by yourself. The numbers that I've seen have shown us to be, if we continue on that same rate, that then certainly we would be, a person may have in a $350,000 to $400,000 houses, we're looking at a general increase of maybe about $150,000 to $200,000 for a $350,000 to $400,000 house. I asked myself this question. There were 30 people that showed up to our hearing, and then there was four people that showed up to the school board hearing. And I see, you know, education is needed. This presentation was awesome. It really informed me. I did not know that exemption was going up on a yearly basis. And it's outstanding work, certainly the frozen exemption is too. So I'll just simply repeat, do whatever you can. It's a shame that the school board took a pass on us and put us in this position. But whatever you can do, I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris, could you come forward, please? So there were a couple of questions that were asked. Can you provide some clarity?
Yes, I can. And I always appreciate Councilwoman Thomas. We've had conversations over the last couple of years. And I can appreciate the fact, because she does ask very poignant, very, very interesting questions. And I think likely she's getting from some of her constituents. So we had part of this conversation earlier on, we spoke prior to the meeting when this question came up. So we are bound by the information that we are, you know, the state provides us with, their structure on how we are to submit the digests, how to submit the information. There's a form called the PT 32.1 that the state requires every jurisdiction to put together. It's their formula. We have to kind of input our data in order to complete the form. So the form is used to generate the percentage of tax increase numbers that the question was posed in reference to. What it is, is it's the rate at which we'll use it, you know, it's a, you're taking into account, it's the rollback rate versus what the proposed rate will be. So she's absolutely correct in that the unincorporated percentage versus the incorporated percentage, there was a pretty big disparity. And the difference that creates this can really kind of come down to two different areas, two, a couple of different factors. One is the size. Unincorporated is much larger than the combined incorporated areas, the county's general fund millage rate. That's one of the biggest ones, the fact that the unincorporated area is so much bigger, about three times bigger than incorporated areas. So that certainly plays into that. As well as the county's general fund, this year, as stated earlier, it decreased from, last year it was 8.6999, and now this year it decreased to 8.055. So that difference between what the rollback rate would need to be to equate the exact number, amount of taxes from year over year is slightly smaller in the unincorporated areas. So those are two of the main areas that take into account. But what I really want people to focus on is, because of the decrease in the general fund, because the county this year opted to make a decrease in how it was dispersed. So the general fund area was slightly decreased. Some of that money was added to the police, how much we added to the police and the fire. So in this case, the general fund amount, which is paid by each one of the cities, there was a decrease there, as well as a decrease in, I believe, the rec department as well. And that millage, that's special service district millage rate. So what I want people to focus on is that overall total millage rate. So in this case, like I said, for the county, for Henry County, this year, I think it's going to be 38, 38 and change, I have to pull it back up. But because of those decreases, the actual total millage rate in the city of McDonough will actually decrease by about .861. So their overall, even though their city millage rate remained where it was last year, because of some of the decreases that were made by the county, those being the general fund, as well as on the Parks and Rec side, the actual millage rate for year over year, from what the citizens of McDonough were charged, from that last year to this year, is going to be slightly less. I mean, slightly less, almost a full mill less. So again, there are some advantages there. But again, as far as what that, what I want people to focus in on is not so much the rollback rate versus the current millage rate. At the end of the day, it really comes back down to, is the interest rate, is the millage rate going to increase or decrease? So in the case of the county, the 12.733, it remains the exact same. In case of the school board, it remained the exact same. The change being, you know, the delta here being the increase in value. For a city of McDonough, the city rate remained the same. However, because of some of these other components that they utilize, some of the city services, general fund, and Parks and Rec, because there were decreases in those special service districts, they will see an actually slight overall decrease. So it is, you know, going through the process, and I've been at this for about four years now. Lynn's been at it close to 20 years. And it is a challenge. We've worked with our legislation to try and get some of the language changed, because it does get a little bit unsettling, you know, when citizens, we're bound by state law to have to advertise it as a tax increase. So people see that and think, oh, you're increasing the taxes. We're not increasing the tax rate, it's simply a valuation increase. So again, I understand how confusing it can certainly come out and appear. But again, our, what we try to educate our residents on is, go back and look at, you know, the value, obviously the value of the property itself. If that increases, it's going to be an increase. But you want to see, you know, the things that can be controlled by the taxing authorities, is that rate, that millage rate. So again, what the county has chosen to do over the last six-plus years is keep it at the same, same thing with the school board, same thing with the city of McDonough as well. They've, there's been very much fixed for the last couple of years. But they, because the county's actions in breaking out some of the special service districts, they will see a slight decrease. So hopefully that addresses some of the questions that Councilwoman Thomas had.
And you can maybe have a discussion with her after this, if she has further questions. But that ends, Commissioner Robinson?
So can you address, with the city of Stockbridge now operating their own?
So can you address, with the city of Stockbridge now operating their own police department, because you're talking services?
Yes.
Can you kind of elaborate on with now them taking on their own budget, right, for those services, how, how's the impact cha, is there, is there not a change?
There is.
Due to that, so can you just explain it?
Sure, good point. So in previous years, when the county was providing those police services, city of Stockbridge citizens were paying a set mil, prior to 2019, it was rolled up into that twelve point seven three three, but after 2019, they etched out, and they delineated for police, fire, parks and rec, and unincorporated areas. So I think the previous year was one point nine zero four, was the mil that anyone who was receiving police services from the county, they were, had to pay. So that would be, it was all those in unincorporated Henry County, as well as the city of Stockbridge, because their residents were being serviced by Henry County Police. Last year, they opted to go through the process, they've formed their own police force, up and thriving, so they said, we're going to have our own police force and no longer need to require the services of Henry County Police, therefore, that one point nine zero four mils that was, that's paid by all the citizens, will no longer need to be paid by the city of Stockbridge citizens. So that millage went away. So what they're contemplating now is creating a new city mil to help offset the removal of that, of that, of that millage for, specifically for police services, as well as meeting whatever other budgetary needs they may have.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
Yes.
One, thank you very much. A couple of things I think we're very fortunate to have in the county, one is the frozen exemption, and then the other is for our seniors, the, with the school tax.
Yep.
A lot of other counties, I don't work in Henry County, I work down in Butts County, would be thrilled to be able to have these types of exemptions in place. And I'm not sure folks completely understand when they ask the question about wanting a lower millage rate, if they have the frozen exemption, what you're really doing is asking in a reduction for our industrial commercial users. They have the lowest impact to our county services, and they have the highest impact on the roads. So I just asked you if you have your frozen exemption, and I implore you to get your frozen exemption, if you do not have it, hopefully you saw the value of that, is are you wanting the things that impact our roads the most to be paying less money? Just food for thought.
It's a great thought, it's a great comment, you know, Josh Fenn and the Development Authority do a phenomenal job, and, and what they've done in some of the industries they've been able to bring in, and that does, that does a, has a tremendous impact on offsetting some of the tax burden on the industrial and commercial side. Absent that, you know, we likely wouldn't end up having, have a much higher millage rate. So again, kudos to him and his staff and what they do as well.
And folks may not realize, I mean, we're in the bottom third as far as taxes, as far as county taxes in the state, and you can look that up, it's online, so take a look, don't take my word for it, you can go online and see county by county and the city tax rates, they are listed there for you to look at. I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your presentation. And Stephanie, if, I guess, public hearing is closed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, great. So there will be no action taken this morning, this is our first public hearing. Upcoming meetings and events, July twenty-fifth, this afternoon at six PM, we will have another millage rate hearing, and then on August first, at nine AM, at our regular scheduled BOC meeting, we will have the final public hearing and adoption of the millage rate at that particular time. Thank you, and our meeting is adjourned.